Yeah, I can hear you okay.
This meeting is being recorded.
Thank you, Quinn. I will open up the August 16th regular meeting of the Thompson Springs Special Service Fire District. Present are commissioners Trish and me online in the chambers of Clapper, Sarah, Todd, Chris, and I, myself. We also have our clerk, Boyton. I'm an administrator, and I associate with administrator. For citizens to be heard, and this is citizens to be heard for the Thompson Springs Special Fire District. There's any citizens that might be heard. See, I don't think we have anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone online? It's not appeared that there is. We also have fire chief Mark, Mark, who will be placed. Approval of minutes from our. Motion by Commissioner McGinn, second. Second by Commissioner Walker. Any discussion on the third minutes? On call for a vote, are in favor of recruiting minutes from July 19th. Got it. Hasn't been answered. Ratification of the events of the fairies. Bills in the amount of $6,498.38. Payroll in the amount of $823.44. Total bills and payroll in the amount of $7,321.84. Thank you. Thank you. All right, great. A motion by Commissioner Walker, a second by Commissioner McGinn. Any discussion of the bills? Approving the bills. And yes, Trish? Great. Passes the air. The fire chief's report, Chief Markham.
Hi. I apologize for missing the July meeting. I was out of town and just didn't quite get to get to that up, so I'm sorry. I'll go over the recent incidents. Some of these were in July. We've got some more in August. The I-70 corridor's been been busy as usual for this time of year. Got a couple motorcycle accidents, a medical call. Two really bad rollovers. One was right here, basically across from the Thompson 711. That involved a fatality and also we had just a horrible one on the 14th, a couple days ago on I-70 where a child passed away, which no death is good, but the children are really hard. So the responders on that did a great job, but it's just there's nothing we can do. Yesterday, as Moab is experiencing, we had a huge flash flood here in Thompson. I went up the canyon to kind of, well, I'd seen a couple hours of rain, went up and about an eight-foot wall of water was coming down. We, me and one of the guys from UDOT, well, the UDOT put up some some barriers to keep people from going up the canyon because of the amount of water and logs and debris coming down was deadly. And that lasted for several hours. So and the way the canyon's looking, the clouds are looking right now, we might get another one today. So it's not just you guys. We're getting that too now. As far as equipment goes, engine 21, which is my four-wheel-drive brush truck, is still still out of service and I'm working on a replacement. Exploring several different avenues for that. On August 11th, I did have the fire extinguishers. They got their annual inspection. As far as training goes, that's always ongoing. And I'm doing continuous EMS training with Grand County EMS. In the other category, I applied for and was awarded $3,159 from the Utah Fire Department Assistance Grant Program. And that money will be spent on a wildland fire hose and appliances that have either been damaged or or broken or, yeah, so we'll be getting some money for that, also for some PPE and for some training come this winter. And I also completed the Utah State Entity Registration Paperwork for Lieutenant Governor's Governor's Office. That says that we exist. So it's about all I have for now.
Doesn't look like we have any other Thompson business on the agenda. Does it always? Again, we're proven to Grand County. August 16th. For seven all present from the Thompson. Here. All sort of.
Anyone on our Zoom connection who is here for citizens to be heard? It does not look like it. Yes, Mary just pointed out that it is unlikely that we'll get to six o'clock. So we pro, we'll do a quick citizens to be heard when we're right before we close up, just in case anyone logs on, but it's unlikely we'll be here until six. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to department reports and we'll start with the old Spanish Trail Arena Report. Angie Book, old Spanish Trail Arena Director.
Hello.
Hi, Angie.
I'm gonna share my screen here. Hopefully this works the way I want it to. Okay. So this is my report. I'm, at the beginning, I put all of the events for that happened in 2021 and the events that didn't happen. And we could go through this, but I also have it throughout the presentation too. But I put it in here in case anybody wanted to go through it on a fine-tooth comb. Everything's listed there.
And Angie, this this isn't in the packet. Could you email it to us later?
I can.
Thanks.
My things seem away. So I'm trying to close out of this. So spring events, the year started off with good intentions. Spring sports were scheduled along with Zumba classes and horseback riding lessons. Skate Moab had a full schedule on the calendar with their family skate nights. June 9th, 2021, tragedy hit our community the first night of the Pat Creek Fire. OSA responded quickly to emergency service needs and provided shelter along with a location for all logistics for the duration of the fire incident. Over 700 firefighters were housed during this fire. Preparations were being made prior to this incident by OSA employees, which were able to be utilized and proved to be extremely helpful in this time of need. OSA became the command center for the Pat Creek Fire. OSA employees learned quickly how to be part of an emergency task force. The life experience and education that was learned through this tragedy was inspirational. The crews that came in for this disaster will forever influential in how OSA trains and operates. So I just attached some pictures here. The first night that they got there, they did their command center up on the mezzanine, which is seen in this picture up here. And then they brought in yards and all the offices got moved into these yards. Firefighters slept in tents on the baseball fields. This was the kitchen. And where they cooked all the foods out of. And this is where all the supplies were stored. This right here was showers. And it was a full semi of showers. More supply, tents, hand washing stations, bathrooms, and we had multiple of these hand washing washing stations throughout the facility. Same with the bathrooms. Certificates of appreciation were awarded to myself and Greg Poor after the event. They wrote a really nice letter and gave it to us. It was pretty cool. After crews left, the 10 acres of grass are divided into sections. Baseball field number one, field two, soccer field number one, soccer field two, and the pavilion. During the 18 days the crews were stationed at OSA, the watering schedule was interrupted. Baseball field number one took the hardest hit and went 18 days with no water. Baseball field number two was hit just as hard with being watered when we can sneak some water in. The soccer fields received some water during the day, but had to be turned off at the night. The fields were dying and we were prepared to sacrifice some of the grass in this situation. As soon as the crews pulled out of OSA, we got to work. Baseball field number one was left to bear dirt in areas and completely brown grass in other areas, along with an unfamiliar weed that we have never had before. The fields were overwatered and fertilizers and field conditioners were applied. The newly introduced weed was pulled and treated. After a couple of months of TLC, the fields showed much improvement with little to no damage still remaining. So this one, this picture up here is what the fields looked like before the fire. During the fire and then this patch right here, you can see what it looked like after. And that was just a section. I didn't get too many pictures after, but we had large sections that were just bare dirt.
And it's 100% recovery at this time?
Yeah, it looks really, it's probably the best it's ever looked right now. So some of OSA events that happened for the remainder of the year were special service training, weddings, barrel races, solely full society, the powwow, dog agilities, drive-in movie theaters, kinesias, the auto show, PGP auto show, Raptors on the Rocks, Jeep Jamboree. We had some other events I didn't have pictures of, like the avalanche. It's called the Avalanche Center, I think. They did a big movie festival. There were some other smaller events that happened at the pavilion. Maintenance, 2021 was a tough tough year for maintenance. Not only were we short-staffed for a majority of the year, but we had over 12 water line breaks. A majority of the water line breaks were on the ball fields, which is irrigation water. But we also had several culinary lines break. General maintenance at OSA always includes weeds and lots of dirt work. This year it was budgeted for new dirt in both arenas, along with infield-conditioned dirt on the baseball fields. Maintenance has a daily schedule of janitorial duties, landscaping, light electrical, and carpentry items. So I showed some of the waterline breaks here, some of the bigger ones. Just what inside the trenches look like when we have to dig up the lines. Most of the causes from the waterline breaks were these pinholes here. And they would just cause havoc, a lot of mess. And this picture down here is the end of what we call the end of the soccer field, but it would be the entrance to the soccer fields. We actually, that was all rock. It's really hard to maintain and weed. So we pulled all that rock out and we planted grass. And it looks really pretty right now. I'll show that next year's presentation. And then I just showed what it was like bringing in the dirt and working that. This picture right here is a close-up picture of the infield dirt that we put on the baseball fields, which is on this truck here. This waterline break was a actual six-inch line that caused a really big mess onto Spanish Valley. So that was a pretty big mess, if you'll let me know. Fertilizer and water usage. For the 2021 season, soil testing was done and research for products that would provide the proper nutrients needed for the OSA grass. What OSA grass needed was a product to help retain water. I worked with the fertilizer representatives at IFA to come up with a special fertilizer formulated for the needs of the grass based on the soil sample. A humeric acid is also applied three times a year to help retain the moisture, along with changing the water schedule. Proper maintenance is also scheduled and closely monitored. In 2021, OSA came in under usage for water used even with the Pat Creek Fire filling up tankers and all the waterline breaks. OSA has 56 acre feet of water to the ball fields with an additional 20 acre feet temporarily leased from the cemetery. In 2021, OSA used 53.8718 acre feet. 2021 started off extremely dramatic as the new director of a 64-acre facility. I had to look at the whole facility and start with one section and move from there, which led me to the remodel of the main entrance of the arena building. This is usually the first point of contact when a guest comes into OSA. It was in need of extreme deep cleaning. The flooring was old, equipment was outdated, and unsanitary. Multiple hazards and items being out of building and health code. My goal was to clean this location up and make it to a clean, usable area. This is what it looked like before. Hard to see in these pictures, but you could just see the bleached-out stains underneath the urinals. The tiles were lifting, mold was growing. The sheet rock was just rotting out. This right here, just the walls, you can actually see right here on the back of this wall. I came in one night and our refrigerator had caught fire. So that was a little incident that was intercepted. It did caught full fire, but it was starting. These were actually full. They were homes for rodents. They've been surplus. I want to go back. This is some. So this is the inside of the concession. You can see the roof, how it's saggy. We replaced all of those silly tiles with tiles that are too code for a kitchen. All the light fixtures have been replaced. There's been a sink that's been added for hand washing that's up to code now for the health department. Lots of deep cleaning, painted floors, painted walls, and all the old equipment has been surplus. And this is what the behind-the-counters look like. And then this is just us demoing and taking everything down. We ripped out the counter all the way down to the the framework and they're ripping up the floors. This right here is inside the OSA office. The concrete is starting to, was starting to bow up. So we grinded that down and made it flush. And here is a little sneak peek of what it's looking like, but we finished all of the rest of the work in 2022. This wall right here has been replaced with the, I believe it's called FRB. I, the material that blocks a kitchen, so it's up to code. And here's the new flooring. And then here's us working on some of the back for the actual countertop. This is what the 2021 OSA budget looked like. Our actual general fund was $654,880. The red board does pay for a portion of our MNO monthly that's spilled out monthly invoiced. Our capital works budget was $51,500, which include the flooring, the fire system recharge, panels, security cameras, arena dirt for both arenas, fencing materials, and the new concession sink. And then the recreation board fund special projects, they paid $21,422. And that went to the ball field conditioned dirt, roping boxes for the outdoor arena. This is what our revenue looked like. I also put in what 2019 and 2020 looked like, just so you could see what it was like before COVID, what it was like after COVID. What it looked like. We still dealt with a lot of it during COVID, 2021. We had multiple events canceled, but that's what was brought in. Future projects, maintenance items. So our fire suppression system is starting to fail. It's a 30-year fire suppression system. It's leaking. Every time you recharge it and the vibration happens, it just causes a leak somewhere else down the line. It's starting to rust and rot out, which means the pipes are getting shorter and it's not joining up in the joints, right? So we will have to look at a new fire suppression system, which could be anywhere from 100 to 300,000, depending on what contractor we go with. That's a five-year plan that I've been working on with Chris to start a savings account for that. The sound system, that blew during an event a couple months about, well, it was a rodeo. We had to problem solve during the rodeo to make it work, but we will have to look at a new sound system. And I'm gonna be presenting that in my budget for this year. And that should be anywhere between 60 and 70,000. And then we need to look at an implement shed for our implements and then the new county stage, because we'll be the home for that. And I need to get bids and quotes for that. OSA's future goals. Just keep updating OSA with the goal for ease of maintenance, community events, county fair, Easter recon, community days, nights. OSA as a more utilized facility. Present 2022 budget as close to 2021 or slightly under. Developing OSA's pickleball courts, playground, and the outdoor arena. OSA employee team development, creating procedures, and overall safety. That is my presentation. Do you guys have any questions?
How's the, how's staffing looking these days, Angie?
I am fully staffed right now and my team is probably as strong as they've ever been and
Awesome.
I couldn't be prouder of them.
That is good.
Yeah, I am so happy with my staff right now.
Good.
I don't, I don't have a, can you hear me, Jac?
Yeah, we can hear you, Trish.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I was out there yesterday and actually right before I was out there, I was talking to a gal that raises sheep out here in Spanish Valley, and both of us were just saying how OSA is totally transformed in my mind. It's active, people are there, it looks great. I just can't tell you, Angie, I just can't give you enough kudos. You're just doing an amazing job.
Thank you. A lot of hard work, but I tell you, right now with my team, I feel like I could climb mountains.
Good.
I'd like to make a comment. That, you know, I, I visited a lot like during the fire and during the wind, Team Rubicon and before and during it. The way you worked with the people that came in was exceptional. Your professionalism and your you're just, they felt supported. You could tell. So thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else have a question?
Kevin?
Yeah, I had a question about the the budget. So the, you mentioned you got some maintenance and operation money from the red board. That that was not part of the 650,000?
No, that's separate. And it's it's built separate. It's all kept separate.
Okay. And then, is another question, do you know or is it possible to break down that's you know, the the annual budget and I think, you know, some of it's for like, you know, providing community recreation, like all the ball field maintenance and things like that. Others are post hosting, you know, so that's, you know. Is it possible to break that out just to see how much, how much we're spending, like providing recreation for the community, how much we're spending?
I have every single purchase that I make, buying items. So you, you, I could literally send you an Excel spreadsheet of 2021 of everything that I bought. And you can see what account it's to and what I've used it for.
Right. I was just wondering, maybe you already had those broken out that way, if you had.
I do. I have it broken out based on whether it was like general maintenance, whether it was for an event, whether it was for like a piece of equipment, those, those generals, numbers are already broken down to just numbers. And then I also keep a separate spreadsheet of the actual item.
Okay, because I guess the reason I'm asking is, you know, I guess OSA's multiple things, but one, one of the things that it is, is an event venue. And I'm just wondering, is it, as an event venue, is it making money? Is it losing money? You know, you show, you show the numbers of event fees coming in. So I'd be just interested to see how, how much of the budget is, you know, sort of you know, making events possible that doesn't come back to us in event fees and how much is it just providing recreational opportunities for the community?
I would say, I would say good majority of it is for recreation. And just the general upkeep and maintenance of it.
Okay, thanks.
I'd also say that part of its value as an event center is, comes back to the community through, you know, expenses, business profits that the events bring in, et cetera. So even if it might not pencil out there, it probably would benefit the community in other ways. Yeah, anybody?
I just kind of, on a similar sort of thread, was wondering if you had a ballpark idea how many days it's used?
Oh, it's used every day.
Every single day.
Every single day, something's out there.
Great.
And multiple times, whether it's roller skating, biking, someone playing on the grass, somebody doing open ride, somebody's out there all the time.
Yeah, I think one of the very, one of your very first slides had, I think you had a script, a table with a line for each of the events.
Yeah.
Um, if you could, if that, you know, that might already answer Evan's question, or maybe it needs to be supplemented with which days are like open ride days and things like that. But I think it would be interesting to, to see how it, how it breaks down.
So right now, every day is open ride. But today is Tuesday. So like this morning started with Zumba. So Zumba was out there. And then when I left, there was a couple kids out on scooters on the pavilion. Just when I left. And that's just what I saw. But and then we have a group that will just, they'll utilize the soccer field, almost like a track, like a running track. They run every morning. But there's different portions, stuff at different time when the, the public just comes in. Soccer started back up this week. So soccer's starting. But yeah, I have it on the schedule.
All right, any further comment? Thank you so much, Angie.
All right, thank you.
And it looks like we are postponing our facilities report by Sean Fugit to a future meeting. So that one will be off the agenda today. We will move forward with approval of minutes for the August 2nd, 2022 regular commission meeting. Hopefully everyone's had a chance to see the minutes and that would entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes for August 2nd, 2022.
Second. All right, have a motion by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Clapper. Any discussion of the minutes from the last meeting?
They look good. Thank you, Gabe, for giving this to us.
Absolutely. Thanks, Gabe.
It's really nice, I think. Might be the one, last one left that used to get ones. We go months without getting one.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All right. I'll call for a vote then. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes, raise your hand, say aye. And that passes unanimously. We'll move on to the ratification of payment of bills. The county bills, the amount of 977,546 dollars and 66 cents. County payroll and the amount of $320,636 and 66 cents. In total bills and payroll and the amount of 1,298,176 dollars and 72 cents. Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve the bills as read.
Thank you, Mary. All right. I have a motion on the table by Mary and a second by Kevin. Any discussion of the bills? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approval of the bills, raise your hand. Say aye. That also passes unanimously. Moving right along. General reports, commission member disclosures. Does anyone have anything they need to disclose concerning today's meeting? All right. Doesn't look like it. We will move to general commission reports and future considerations. So if you want to lead us off, Trish, on Zoom.
Well, mine is easy. I went on vacation, so I've done a whole lot of nothing and I'm paying the price with the illness now.
Yeah, absolutely, Trish. Thank you. Evan?
Yeah, I, let's see, earlier today I met with EMS board. We had our annual audit completed and were we six or seven years in now? And flying gold star review. So there was lots of compliments towards the staff there and not just being able to provide all the necessary information and records, but their willingness and really drive to have the proper systems in place and checks and balances and bill collecting and all that. So that was really good to hear from the audit committee. There are some positions open up there. If you know folks that are interested in that, there's a boot camp coming up where they're going to be putting prospective technicians through the riggers. We also spoke about the health tax split between them and the health district. And it sounds like those two bodies have come to an agreement on how they would like to see those money split. So that's less wrestling that this body has to do if they've already come to an agreement. And that's my transition to on Thursday, I met with the health district. We spoke a lot about that, that split there. General ports of conditions in the care center. Things are going well. And for those that are really getting into the nitty gritty, there's a, so our health district provides seed money to other organizations and that are outside of this community. And then it's a return. So it's like an investment in healthcare elsewhere. And one of those facilities is being sold. So there's a lot of paperwork that has to happen in a fairly timely manner. So there was a lot of that kind of stuff of dotting i's and crossing t's. And I met with the cemetery district board. The big news there is Mary stole one of our board members. So Norman Boyd is serving on some other boards now.
He's going to be on the future site. I apologize.
He didn't want to get spread too thin. So he's stepping down from the cemetery board. So there's a vacancy there. If you know anyone that's willing and able to serve on that board. It's, it's, it's a nice way to be involved in the community. And then I attended the planning meeting, the kind of open house at Star Hall regarding the workforce housing camp park plans. And then also the county employee party, which was very enjoyable and my highlight of OSA so far this year. So, well, I don't know, it has some good roller skating too, but it was a nice night and I was glad to get out there and see everyone. So that's all I got.
All right. Thanks, Evan. Sarah?
Sure. I just had the pleasure of doing five days on Labyrinth Canyon where I didn't hear a single motor. It was amazing. And I saw the possibilities that could be possible for the future. Anyway, I also, I don't have many updates because second week is kind of slow for me. But I did, I will update about the interagency fire restrictions. The state and federal partners have rescinded fire restrictions across state lands and unincorporated lands and Grand and Sandown counties. Also BLM and Monticello Field offices, including the national parks and the Mantilles Al National Forest in the Moab and Monticello Ranger Districts. So fire restrictions are no more in those zones. And then one more thing, I wanted to scope the commission for kind of like tentative approval. The, the Mantilles Al hydrologist, National Forest hydrologist, Daniel Lee, is, has come up with a proposal for, it's called hydrologic function rehabilitation and restoration proposal. And I think it's a very decent, it's like a 10 year plan to do stream and spring and wetland and upland restoration in the, in the mountains. And that includes Pat Creek Fire Burn scars and other areas. It does not include like altering ditches and canals or anything related to agriculture. And I don't know, it just seems like a good plan. I wondered if the comment period is on due, it's August 26th. And I think it'd be nice if the commission wrote a letter that was basically in support of this forest plan. It's, it's very forward looking. He's looking at doing some Beaver Dam analogues up there and grade stabilization. Really important stuff to keep our water clean. So if there was support from the commission, I could write a letter and then it could be ratified at the next meeting. How about a temperature check? Straw pull up, straw pull?
Yeah, I think that sounds good.
All right. I will do that. That's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Sarah. Josie?
Okay. I also attended the housing forum at Star Hall. That was on the third. That was a big housing day. There were like so many events and that was the only one I was able to get to. But it was great. Kaitlin Myers talked about the land trust work and Kaia Marionfeld talked about things through the lens of the city planning commission. And then Emily Campbell talked about the county efforts. And I think it just underlies the importance of engagement, not only to receive community input, but I feel like there were a lot of, there's a lot of education around very specific questions where people have either misunderstandings or misperceptions or don't know what's been done or what's being done or what our current code actually is. And it's really great to field those things on a regular basis so that we are clarifying and educating and sort of gaining a literacy from our constituents around these things to get their engagement. So I thought it was a wonderful event.
How was turnout at that event?
Turnout was good. Yeah. I mean, I think I joked that the turnout was much better than the John Curtis Town Hall. It was, it was a lot of people and a lot of questions and comments and engagement. So I think it was highly successful. And then of course, the city's assured housing ordinance had just passed that morning, dedicating 33% to workforce housing. So I think there were just lots, lots of good discussion and lots of good things happening or potentially happening. So yeah, super good. I also attended the MOAB area housing task force meeting the following day. And kind of similarly, I feel like engagement is really on everybody's minds right now. Everybody's been doing such good work. And there was a lot of conversation about having like a recurring housing engagement series, kind of in the manner of like science on tap where it's fun, but it's also educational. And so there's really good discussion happening around a potential kickoff event for that. And then what it would look like to have a regularly scheduled, like housing engagement series on a variety of topics. So also really exciting. On August 5th, we had a really productive conversation with CNHA and Science Moab and MCAT around sort of ideas for cooperative shared use of the information center moving forward. So I think we're really on track to finalize the lease agreement by the end of the year. That both gives CNHA the stability that I think that they're looking for to know that we are really interested in them continuing to stay in that space, but also providing flexibility for new things to happen and new organizations to sort of come into the fold. So that was very productive. On August 9th, I went to Four Corners Community Behavioral Health Annual Board Retreat. And highlights from that, so there's an officer from Price who talked about crisis intervention team training, which I think that of the kind of tri counties, Carbin and Emory has been doing a lot more of partially because they often hold their trainings during our busy season. And so we're not, Grand County is not able to, or Moab City is not really able to send a lot of officers to those trainings. But essentially crisis intervention team or CIT training is something that's been happening for a while in Utah. And it sort of diversifies dispatch and response to incorporate providers such as Four Corners Health and communities for responses that are not as appropriate for just straight up law enforcement. And it was really educational. One thing that is, it feels very pertinent, especially given the recent announcement of the lawsuit with the city, is that the more like CIT training you have and demonstration that those kinds of protocols are being followed. I mean, not only is it just good practice, but it's also kind of liability insurance. It really makes a much stronger case for not having liability issues around things that do go wrong. So I know that the officer after our board retreat was going to talk to Jared Garcia and perhaps Grand County Sheriff as well about just getting more CIT training within Grand County. I think there's talk of maybe having a Moab training next year, which I think would be really helpful. Apparently if officers are trained in CIT training and are part of the crisis intervention team, they have like a little CIT pin by their badge. So that's an interesting thing to kind of look for when you're engaging with law enforcement. So yeah, that was a highlight and the new facility is really amazing. I, yeah, it just seems like a whole nother level, leveling up of our capacities in Moab and in Grand County. And then we also got to tour a lot of the residential facilities, which I think is also kind of something that is out of sight for a lot of people in Grand County. But it's very important to note that residential facilities save us a lot of money because it keeps people from being hospitalized for like mental health emergencies and things like that. So as much as we can support those kinds of things, the better. And I think that's it.
Wow, you're busy.
Yeah, thank you. Kevin?
Oh, let's see. So on August 3rd, I met with BLM staff. One piece of news is that they're going to proceed a little bit sequentially with these dispersed camping EAs. So you may recall that they were working on three different areas. One was vibrant, you know, very large. Another is Two Rivers and I forgot the name of the third. But a lot of the comments they got during, during scoping was people wanting to know just like how many campsites would be affected. And BLM doesn't really have that now. So they, they're going to sort of move headfirst with the Two Rivers area, which is less complicated. And so, and then it's still a long, before this dispersed camping plan is fully implemented, it might take up to two years because it involves a federal registry notice and things like that. But they assure us there are some things they can do in terms of, you know, better regulating camping that they can be doing in the interim. So they're still waiting for the labyrinth travel plan to come. I think it's, there's technical revisions being made at the state office. They, there's been some engagement about regulating motorized paragliders and helicopters and those kinds of things and more just sort of what's, you know, the legal interpretation of their existing rules and whether they would apply. And many, many of you know Nicole Gaddis Wyatt. She, Gary Torres, the next person up from her in the chain of command retired and she got that job. So she's now going to be the district manager. And if anybody really wants to be a BLM office field manager, there's an opening now. So you can apply.
Will her office move to Monticello or where she, or Blandy, is it, is Blandy?
I believe that's where she lives because our housing is so expensive unfortunately. So I wouldn't be surprised. And I think Gary was in Monticello. So it wouldn't surprise me if she does, but I don't know.
Just come down here.
Yeah. Normally there would be a road special service district meeting, but that meeting got postponed for a month because there wasn't anything substantive on the agenda. But speaking of roads, I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you to the road department. I, like many people, have been going all around, looking at flash floods in the aftermath. And it's really, you know, you see the road department crews, you know, late, late in the day, you know, just a few hours after it rained, clearing things. So this is, you know, usually when we think of emergency responders, we're thinking of, you know, law enforcement, things like that. But the road crew also does quite a lot of work. And all the, all the detention ponds have to be cleared out and things like that. So this is a busy time of year. So I just, you know, really appreciate that they, that all seems to be well under control.
All right. Is that it, Kevin? All right. Thanks.
Thank you. And yes, I want to, and Bill Holtz from our building department has done a lot, not, not only with the floods, but his willingness that he's getting those sandbags and everything that he's doing. And so our two bills have worked very hard these last couple of weeks. And I'm really pleased with our staff. We're so lucky to have good staff. On, I've worked getting ready, which I'm sorry, Evan, to get the future sites planned. People organized. And this is earlier than usual because it's, the closure is coming sooner. And I was wondering if there was a commissioner that would like to be engaged in the future sites plan. I, I have not been in the past because I'm more on the lobbying side of things. So is there anyone that would like to work on?
How often are those meetings scheduled?
It'd be like, you'll be real busy for a little while. He's not, it's not going to start until September. We've already talked to all the agencies such as BLM, National Park, Sovereign Lands, the, you know, the development, the economic development department. And we got everybody, I think we have a full staff, full volunteers. But I was thinking it would be really good if we had a commissioner or somebody from the staff. It wouldn't have to be a commissioner that was engaged in those meetings. So give me a, think about it. I can pin Russ, Russell Von Kope down a little more about the time. But it's, it's, it's a beginning and a closure. I mean, it starts, they work hard, they get together, they have some public meetings and they get together the building department, not the building department, the tribal council. I, no, it is the, well, one of the departments in our county helps with the mapping and so does the National Park Service. So then it'll be, once you get the input and things, it'll be coming up with a map to show and some writing. So.
All right. If you could email us a reminder and just a little bit of information, Mary, that'd be great to look over.
And I'll send something to you too, Mallory, cause I, you know, August with backup Ben. I don't know if August has told Ben. August has volunteered to be part of the committee. So we do have representation there. But, and then Ben will be his backup in case he can't make it. But it wouldn't, you know, if there's anyone in the staff in the county that would like, because this will probably be the last future site plan we'll be doing. And it would be used a lot when we go back to Washington DC to lobby for the transfer of the. of the land with money to Grand County and the city of Moab. And so if we can show them that we're, we have a real good plan, it'd help. So that's good. On the fire, I just wanted to say as far that people still need to get permits to, to like burn their weeds, to do things like that from the health department. And I believe that's your first stop because they check air. So, and Rudy told me that the moisture was 50% or above in most of the area. So this is very different than when we were talking last year when it was way below average. And then I just have a future consideration too. Could you, could you put that up for me? On Sunday, I learned about a, the International Day of Peace, which is on September 21st and it's international. And I think it would be really great if Grand County participated in a small way this year. And so, can you enlarge that? Somebody with, anyway, I have a resolution here that Christine is going to improve. But it's, whereas in 1981, the United Nations General Assembly unanimously established the International Day of Peace, Peace Day as a day for all humanity to commit to peace above all differences and to contribute to building a culture of peace. Whereas 20 years later in 2001, the General Assembly unanimously voted to declare the day as a 24-hour period of nonviolence and ceasefire, a complete cessation of hostilities. Whereas the International Peace Day is observed around the world on September 21st and we have a role to play. The theme of this year is End Racism, Build Peace. Whereas achieving true peace entails more, much more than laying down arms. It requires us to build in a societies where all members feel that they're, they can flourish. It involves creating a world which people are treated equally regardless of their race. Conflict continues to erupt across the globe, causing people to flee, to have seen race-based discriminations at borders. As COVID-19 keeps attacking our community, we have seen how certain racial groups have been hit much harder than others. As economics suffer, we have seen hate speech and violence directed at racial minorities. We can work to dismantle the structure that entrenches racism in our midst. And we can support movement for equality and human rights everywhere. We can speak out against hate speech, both online and offline and online. We can promote anti-racism through education and repertory of justice. Now, therefore be resolved, Grand County joins the effort of the United Nations in working towards a world free of racism and racial discrimination and encourages all organizations and individuals in Grand County to observe the International Day of Peace on Wednesday, September 21st in ways that are meaningful and inspiring to them. Grand County shall facilitate the Observance of Peace Day by sending out a press release to media and providing a meeting space for people to gather for a minute of silence, moment of peace at noon. At, as this is done in each time zone, the minute of silence creates a 24-hour peace wave around the globe. As the movement progresses, we realize that what rarely counts is life and love and our responsibility to each other, our connectedness to all life. And so I would like to move forward and create a resolution such as this. If people are interested, what I would like kind of as a thumbs up to the day is, because I'd like to start advertising it, getting it out. I've talked to different religious organizations and nonprofits and they said they'd be happy to bring just like some cookies and people could bring a sack lunch and we could just meet out in the lawn. And then next year, we will, it'll be on our radar and we can be better prepared and wouldn't have to vote the same month that we were going to do this, which is really not timely. And each year they pick something to focus on and this year it happened to be racism. It might not be the same focus next year. So that's what I would like to, and Christine is very excited about it. She's going to get it in a better format and do her magic to make it even more formal. So I wanted to know for future considerations, would it be okay if I move forward with this and we can vote on it next meeting?
Yeah, I'm all for it, Mary. Thank you.
Okay. That's my report. I was gone last week, so I have not been to meetings other than stealing Evan's barman chair. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mary. And I was also out on vacation more or less and also out in the wilderness and away from motors for the most part, although helicopters are pretty noisy and ubiquitous, even in parts of the wilderness. But I did have Chair Colin Topper from the Trail Mix Committee wanted me to share that there will be a, that the Hawks Glide, which will be the middle part of the Raptor route. Trail Mix is going to facilitate building of that from September 15th to October 31st. And they're looking for volunteers for that. That's up San Flats Road. They'll connect the bottom part of Eagle Eye to the top part of Falcon Flow, which should be a great addition to the Moab Trail System. And also the, the bike path north of town, everything north of the bridge up to 313 is being worked on this week until August 20th. So, so the bike path on the north side of the river is going to be closed for the next few days. Yes.
I think they postponed that till next week.
Ah, did they? Okay.
Because of the mud and the
Oh, gotcha. Thanks, Quinn.
The counties are going to clean the path off this weekend and they'll repay it next.
Great. Appreciate the update. And that's it for me. Otherwise I also missed a couple of meetings. All right, on to elected official reports. And it looks like Gabe, our county clerk, is the only elected official present. Do you have anything to report, Gabe?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Thanks. Administrator reports. Mallory?
Hey, as usual, you guys stole a lot of my updates, so I'll quickly touch on those. Bill Horst and Bill Jackson also want to give a shout out to something that a lot of people don't realize and that I never appreciated was that they, as department heads, they go out after hours or on a day off. That's their time. And so it's sometimes canceling vacations or working on a day off. So it's really, really awesome that they, they do that. And the other thing that I never realized is this joy of rain. I run outside and celebrate. For them, it's a completely different world. And that is more panic than anything of, is a flood coming? So just all around a shout out to them. Also, Mary, you touched on it. Bill Horst was able to coordinate something. I believe he did it more as a citizen effort, but shout out to the football team. We had a number of their players come out on a Saturday and help fill quite a, quite a few sandbags. So thank you for that to Bill and the football team. I followed Evan to the barbecue, which I know with travel and preparing for back to school, a majority of people were out of town, but worry not, there will be another one hopefully for the holidays. So a big shout out to Renee, Angie and her staff, Alicia, Angie Mortensen and Melissa. Hopefully I'm not forgetting anybody, but your hard work on that is greatly appreciated. And special events, we're having our next little work group on Thursday. So hopefully there will be a few components of that coming to you shortly, just so that some of the issues you guys have seen with the, with the last minute rush can be preventable at some point. Of course, there will be a lag time. And more to come with that. Mick, I also went to the Housing Town Hall, which was really great. So thank you to Elisa and her staff. And that is all that I will say today. Thank you.
Thanks, Mallory. Anything to add, Quinn?
No, I'm good. Thanks.
All right. Great. We're up to presentations. So we'll have a presentation on the United Transportation Master Plan by Kimberly Horn Associates. And then we've moved our public hearing up to in front of our action items because it involves Kimberly Horn Associates and the Transportation Master Plan as well. So I would welcome Brett from Kimberly Horn, if you want to, I'll, I'll give it over to you, Brett.
Great. Thank you. Was Elise, were you going to provide an introduction first?
Okay, okay. Yeah, it looks like, it looks like you're on Brett.
Okay. I'll, I'll go ahead then. I'm grateful for the opportunity to present our Unified Transportation Master Plan to you. We, just as an overview of the purpose of, of the project was to identify those actionable steps and projects to achieve the community's goals for a safe, reliable, connected and efficient transportation system. We really focused on multimodal mobility, not just vehicles, but moving people and establishing and improving connectivity. The UTMP includes not only projects, specific projects we'll get to, which we will get into in a minute, but also a series of general strategies such as improving pedestrian and bicycle safety awareness, maintaining our pavement in good condition, continuing to improve sidewalk and pathway connectivity in conjunction with new development, priority on maintaining local street connections and implementing wayfinding signage as well as traffic signal improvements. More specifically, the project, the UTMP identified 38 improvement projects that were prioritized based on recommendations from stakeholders, the public and our technical advisory committee. The improvement projects were categorized as seen here. First, 19 projects were what we call active transportation, focused on improving connectivity and safety for bicycles and pedestrians. We had 14 roadway improvement projects and they primarily improving connectivity, not only for vehicles, but also pedestrians and bicyclists as they're able to use the sidewalk, et cetera. And we had five parking and transit improvement projects. The 38 improvement projects were, we estimated planning level costs at a total of about 32 million, recognizing that's a, a, a big chunk. But that is to be implemented over the next 10 to 20 years. The roadway improvement projects were estimated at 56 million. And the parking and transit improvement projects estimated at just over 12 million. Examples of the, the 38 projects for which additional planning and assessments are needed are listed here, 500 West Seafrost School Improvements Project, additional planning on 100 West, Pat Creek Drainage, Mill Creek Quarter Assessment, 4th East, Spanish Valley Drive roadway improvements, as well as Shared Use Path, Spanish Trail Road and US 191 parking evaluation. During the, the, the project, we, we had several opportunities for the public to engage, including through three community meetings, four technical advisory committee meetings and a round of stakeholder interviews.
Brett, do you mind if I interrupt you for a sec? Are you, are you trying to share your screen right now?
Oh, am I not sharing it?
It is not, it, it's not appearing.
Okay. Well, I apologize for that. Yeah, I almost completed the whole thing without doing that.
I, I should have caught that earlier.
Okay. I'm just talking at you now. Are you able to see that better?
Yes, that is, that is there.
Okay. You want me to back up? Should I repeat that now with?
Um, anyone want to, we've got a copy, but for folks that are watching, that, I think, I think we're good to keep rolling.
Okay. Okay. Let me get back to where we were here. Okay. And there is a, ongoing opportunities continue, to continue to provide input to the city. Throughout the project, we had a website, grandcountymoabtmp.com, as well as an email address and a, and a hotline. I am happy to answer any specific questions. I presume you all had a, a chance to take a look at the, the Transportation Master Plan as well as some of the, the projects that were included therein. Is there any questions that I can answer specifically about some of the projects without reciting every single one, one of the, the 38 projects we have listed?
Anyone have a question for Brett or comment?
This, this might be more a question for Elisa than Brett, but I'm just curious this, you know, at some point we have to decide to actually proceed with one of these projects or, you know, make a choice. If we're signing off with this, this plan, is that, I mean, is this something we should think about really seriously? Whether something's ranked number two versus five? Or is it kind of not a big deal because this is just advisory? And next year when we're doing our budgeting, then we'll decide which side or projects is going to come first? Like, like, I guess another way of saying it is if we have other ideas about the prioritization, should we speak up now and revise a report or just let it go ahead and not worry about that?
Well, Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, but I would say, because this is a general plan document, that this is an advisory document, that it's more for our guidance and your guidance. And if, I think if funding came available for one of the priority projects that was lower in the list and, and you needed to act on it, I don't think we would need to go back and amend it. But I don't know, Brett, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, that, that's precisely, you know, we, we did provide a, a recommended prioritization based on what we heard from the technical advisor committee, from the public, from our stakeholders and considering criteria that they developed. But certainly if there is a project, a funding source that is available or public perspectives change or, you know, current events, et cetera, there is nothing that wouldn't say, hey, let's go ahead and move this project forward, even though they, maybe number four or five, you know, good to go ahead and advance that, that project.
Yeah, their recommendations is what it is. So.
So in, in voting for it, we're just acknowledging the recommendation.
Yeah. It doesn't lock you into that timeline or that priority list.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Brett or Elisa?
So I, the next item on the list after, on the agenda, sorry, is the actual public hearing to adopt the resolution. And so I will provide a little summary, agenda summary on that portion of it next.
Okay. If there's nothing else from Brett or anything for Brett, then we can proceed to the public hearing. So let's do that. Okay. So we're, we generally will do public hearings at the end of the meeting, but we're moving this one up because we just had the presentation from Kimberly Horn. And this is directly related to that. So we'll get to the public hearing before we get to our general business. So item 11A, Public Hearing to Adopt the Unified Transportation Master Plan, the UTMP, as an amendment to the 2030 General Plan Transportation Element. And Elisa, you're on.
Thank you, Jacque. So many thanks to Kimberly Horn Associates for all the hours of work on the UTMP, along with Bill Jackson and Jeff Williams, and I'm sure there were others that were involved. John, actually, our previous planning director was involved earlier in the process as well and spent a lot of time. So I kind of came towards the end and just kind of facilitating this part of it. But yeah, thanks to those folks for all their wisdom and input along the way. The UTMP identifies action strategies and projects to achieve the community's goals for a safe, reliable, connected, and efficient transportation system to improve all modes of transportation. The UTMP identifies improvements to roads, streets, trails, and connections that are under jurisdiction and responsibility of Grand County and the City of Moab. Recommended projects will be considered for over near, for near, mid, and long-term planning horizons. Prioritized projects include street connections, intersection, and roadway improvements and new pathways. The UTMP will be adopted as an amendment to the twenty thirty General Plan Transportation Element. Staff's recommendation is to suspend the rules this evening and not leave the public hearing open and go ahead and approve the UTMP in anticipation of applying for US DOT's Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant as a joint application with the City of Moab, which has a application deadline of September fifteenth. So there is a sense of timeliness on this one. And we also, in the next agenda item, I will discuss the grant opportunity a little bit more, so.
Thanks, Elisa. Questions for Elisa and/or Brent, who's still on? Seeing none, unless someone would like to make a motion to suspend the rules? We opened it before. So was I correct? Right. Is there anyone who would like to make any public comment currently in the room or on our Zoom concerning this public hearing to adopt the Unified Transportation Master Plan? It looks like we don't have anyone here or on Zoom who would care to comment. Maybe we do have someone.
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Let's wait for one sec and see if Mark is on to make a comment. Mark, are you here to make a comment concerning our public hearing to adopt the UTMP?
Did you ask me?
Yes, sir. You have your hand up on the Zoom.
Thank you. Let me lower my hand. My name is Mark Horowitz. This will be, this will be the third time I've made this comment. Let me move away from the television. Branches, question for you, I would say. Mike, concerns relate to the intersection of Highway one ninety-one and four hundred east. I believe that a large roundabout would be best there so that trucks traveling northbound do not have to stop, but only slow down, and thus eliminating a good deal of the engine brakes that are a safety hazard for me, and it also saves a great deal of energy for trucks, in particular, southbound from Kane Springs Road, and then having to screech to a halt at the intersection of four hundred. So this will be the third time I've made this comment, first at one of the open houses and most recently at the Planning Commission, and here tonight. I'd be curious to hear from Brent about the prospect or the advisability of a project like that at the intersection of four hundred. Thanks very much.
Yeah, Brett, that's fine if you'd like to reply to that comment.
Sure. Yeah, and you're talking about the intersection of four hundred and US one ninety-one. A dot, or pardon me, U dot, when considering any improvements, they follow a process called an intersection control evaluation. And before actually programming a project and allocating construction funds, they would consider various intersection types, looking at the safety record, what the improvement needs, their operational needs are. And they would make a specific recommendation as to the suitability of a roundabout or other traffic control device following that more in-depth analysis. So I would recommend that when the project is to that stage, that you continue to emphasize your comments. And I'm certain that U dot would be open to making sure that that evaluation is performed.
Great. Thanks for your response on that, Brett. Before the comment, I think Commissioner Stock was ready to make a motion.
I would move to approve the proposed resolution to adopt. To suspend the policy to vote on the public hearing item at the following commission meeting. And I moved to approve the proposed resolution to adopt the Grand County and City of Moab Unified Transportation Master Plan as an amendment to the twenty thirty General Plan.
Can we combine motions like that?
I don't think.
Oh, the first one?
Yes, please.
Okay, well, then I move to suspend the policy.
Thank you, Sarah. Do you have a second? Thanks. Motion by Sarah and second by Josie to suspend our rules to vote on the approval right now. Any discussion?
I feel comfortable with this just based on the fact that there's been extensive public comment already received on this in open houses and lots of engagement so far, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's been well.
So why, what do we gain by doing it two weeks earlier? Okay, it wasn't clear to me in the packet that we had. I thought the deadline for the grant was so far enough in the future.
Did you want to speak to that, Elisa?
Yeah, Kim Lee Horn is working on the grant application with us in the city. And we just need to have enough time to finalize the grant application in order to submit it by September fifteenth. And I guess if we waited until September sixth, it would be, it would be tight, you know, we just didn't want to push it that close.
But there's preparation that you can't do until we officially approve it, even though it seems likely that we will approve it and it's.
I mean, I think it was just kind of trying to be there on the side of caution and just get it approved sooner than later. And since there has been so much public comment and public workshops and process on this, that that's what we were hoping. But yeah, the grant heavily relies on us having an adopted plan that supports all of this effort and prioritization of projects.
I guess my concern is that, you know, we've very rarely suspended rules this way. I think unless there's a deadline that we really can't meet, you know, we generally wait the extra two weeks because that gives people, you know, we had zero. I'm sorry, Mark. We have only one public comment, but, you know, not, not a whole lot now that it's finals. So I tend to err on the side of, you know, not, you know, extending the public hearing, allowing another round of public, you know, allowing us to eliminate it. I mean, if it's really going to mess up the grant application, then maybe, but it.
I mean, I, I see your point, and it could be fine. Brett, what do you think about your timeline in terms of holding off until September sixth?
And I'd point out that it's a three-week period this time because we have a open week.
The grant application just requires the plan to be adopted prior to submission. So if it is adopted, it sounds like the date would be September sixth.
Correct. That would be.
We would, and if we were able to receive the documentation that it had been adopted to include in the grant application, then we could still include that, as long as that documentation is available to submit with the grant application.
One thing I was going to add that isn't a big deal necessarily, but something if it isn't going to be voted on tonight is, I believe, the city also has to sign, so, you know, just coordination with them, completely doable. Oh, well, that's on the letter of support for the grant. Correct. They have already gone through their process to adopt and approve the UTMP. Prior, at a prior council meeting. So their process for adopting the UTMP is done. And so it's, the second agenda item is the grant, letter of support for the grant. That would be, that's different.
Sorry.
Okay. Back, yeah, back to the discussion. I personally agree with Sarah that I feel like this has been pretty well vetted and put before the public. So I'd be, I'd be comfortable voting to suspend the rules right now. Any other opinion?
Well, and it sounds like in this process, there will be a lot of future engagement opportunity as well as to kind of how things are specifically executed.
Yeah, I mean, I think we probably have some sort of process for engaging the public when we, when it comes to pursuing funding for the projects and getting the projects implemented. Yeah, I can't quite put my finger on what that would be, but we would, we always want to have that public engagement going, ongoing, for sure.
And I just want to say, my reasons for, you know, not wanting to suspend the rules aren't really specific to this, this plan. You know, I grant that, you know, I'm not aware of anything that's controversial in it, and it has, this isn't the first time it's come up. But I just think, you know, there's a high, you know, if we're going to speed things up, we should, there should be a pretty high threshold for reasons. It just doesn't need to, but it's not a big deal.
Well, I do have a motion on the table by Commissioner Stock and a second by Commissioner Kovas to suspend the rules tonight. Any further discussion before I call for a vote?
Quinn, does this, to suspend the rules, do we need a super majority?
So a super majority would be five, five commissioners. Right. Thanks, Mary, for the clarification. All right, I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand, say aye. All those opposed? All right, it looks like the motion passes seven or five to two with Commissioners Clapper and Commissioner Walker in the negative. So I would entertain a motion to approve the transportation. Or not?
So moved.
Thank you. I have a motion by Commissioner McGee. Do I have a second? Second by Commissioner Stock. Discussion. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the Unified Transportation Master Plan as an amendment to the twenty thirty General Plan Transportation Element. All raise your hand, say aye, and that motion passes unanimously, seven to nothing. Thank you. And thank you, Brett and Elisa. Appreciate it. Okay, we can now move on to our general business action items, discussion, and consideration of approval. And getting, staying on the same topic, we will go with thirteen A, request for support to apply for U Dot's US Department of Transportation Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A grant program jointly with the City of Moab. Elisa?
Thank you. So the bipartisan infrastructure law bill, or law, sorry, B I L, established the new Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A discretionary program with five billion dollars in appropriated funds over the next five years. In fiscal year twenty twenty-two, up to one billion is available. The SS4A program funds regional, local, and tribal initiatives through grants to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. The SS4A program supports Secretary of Transportation Pete Buttigieg's National Roadway Safety Strategy and the department's goal of zero deaths and serious injuries on the nation's roadways. In addition, the UTMP, which we just approved, supports this goal to reduce traffic-related serious injury crashes and fatalities to zero per year by the year twenty twenty-five. The goal is consistent with that of the Utah Department of Transportation, which sets Utah's ultimate goal of zero fatalities as well. The project list in the packet identifies those projects that would fit within the safety objectives of the grant and are also ready for implementation. The deadline for this application is five o'clock Eastern Standard Time on September fifteenth of this year. Kimberly Horn Associates has committed to continue their work with the county and city of Moab to assist in submitting the grant application. The county can anticipate a later ask upon award of the grant to provide matching funds along with the City of Moab to a total of twenty percent of the grant award. Staff recommendation is to provide the commission support to go forth with a grant application to US DOT's Safe Streets and Roads for All and consent to cooperate with the City of Moab in pursuing the funding opportunity and jointly implement transportation improvement projects that will improve safety for all. See attached letter of cooperation. It's a draft letter, so if you request any changes to that, you can let me know. The city is, you know, going to sign on to this as well. And Brett, do you have anything else that you'd like to add on the grant opportunity?
Yeah, thank you very much. We think this is a great opportunity to begin to implement some of the primary recommendations from the UTMP. The projects that will be proposed for implementation are all focused on safety and particular multimodal safety, which is a criteria of the grant application. So we do feel that there are some great projects, including projects such as a Spanish Valley Drive Shared Use Path, Mill Creek Drive Corner Improvements, Aggie Boulevard and US one ninety-one traffic signal. And then Dogwood Avenue and US one ninety-one crossing are some of the projects that we are proposing to include in the implementation portion of the grant. So great opportunity to secure some funding right on the heels of the UTMP.
Does the grant award any additional points or anything for climate efforts?
This, I need to go back and look at the criteria they have in the past, different funding programs. And need to look, this one, I think, does not, but I need to double check. I think this one is, it's focused on safety as well as improving areas for disadvantaged communities, connectivity, safety, access for those communities. But let me, I can check on that for you to see if that's one of the criteria. I need to double check on that.
Great, thanks. I think especially with connecting to the regional airport with some of these multimodal, you know, especially bike, e-bike sort of opportunities to, you know, it'd be really cool to be able to pedal out your front door, hop on a plane and go to Washington and never step foot in the car, so I think it's worth highlighting. Yeah, if there's interest from them in that.
Thanks.
Kevin? So the project list is tentative. Is that coming back to us in another meeting? Or just if we have ideas, we should talk with you in the interim?
I think it would be more, we can, we can get your feedback now and come back to you with the final list. That's at a later point, maybe at the next meeting even when we approve the, or sorry, we already approved. Yeah, I think at this point, just your feedback would be great on the project list. Yeah.
Yeah, because this does seem more consequential than the plan because this is like actual money to actually build stuff, so.
For sure.
I'm really excited to see project A ten on the project list. It seems, the way it's phrased is a little bit confusing, but it's to construct a shared use path that connects the pedestrian hybrid beacon on US one ninety-one at City Market, crossing Pat Creek to Kane Creek Boulevard, and then north to three hundred south and also connecting to one hundred west. And that's just kind of like a disconnected part of the bike path that I think impacts a lot of people that live on the west side. And it's a huge safety concern because you often have to choose to traverse on the sidewalk along one ninety-one where people are turning into you, and then there's kind of a sketchy, very large crossing of one ninety-one if you want to get across. Whereas if you could connect directly to the bike path on one hundred west, you could then access the underpass. And kids could completely avoid the highway from all over town. So I'm very excited about that. I know. I'm very excited about that. I know there's a lot of like different right of ways that would probably have to be addressed in there, but it, it seems like a good, great project to start to move forward with.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more. I've spent a lot of time in that area and it's, it's pretty dangerous. I've seen some accidents and people almost getting hit and that, that's a, that's a great spot to improve safety yet. And also the Spanish Valley Drive Shared Use Path, I think is, is just another awesome addition to our Moab active transportation system. It's gonna be really nice to have that.
Yeah, I'd love to add the AT two as well. I mean, I've tried to cross from the La Quinta Bike path to the other side, actually, when we went to dinner with, with John Curtis and it was dicey. I felt like I was risking my life to go to that dinner, so. Yeah, I think it's very palpable, a lot of these aspects of, of safety being actually pretty immediate for a lot of people. My one question on that for Elisa is, like, do you feel like you've gotten a healthy amount of public input around specific sort of, you know, target points in the community or, you know, spots and neighborhoods that people have definitely communicated this is an issue?
I think through the UTMP we did, and, and these projects came directly out of that project list, so. That's kind of the avenue that, you know, that we went through to select these projects. I will say that, like I, like I did say, we are open to having more feedback on this at this time before the application is finalized, so, great, thank you.
All right.
Elisa, if I could, I, I did look, climate change is one of the criteria, it's criteria number four.
Oh.
Great.
Cool.
Thanks for looking that up, Brent. Secretary Pete, man, he likes that stuff.
Thank you, Brent.
All right, would anyone like to make further comment or, or make a motion?
I move to, I move to support the, the application for the US DOT Safe Street and Roads for All Grant Program jointly with the city of Moab.
Thanks, Mary. Do I have a second? All right, motion by Commissioner McGann and second by Commissioner Kovash. Further discussion?
So that's assuming there will be some, some kind of edits to include reducing car use or whatever for climate initiatives and then a prioritization list to be finalized before submission. Is that what we were just talking about?
Yeah, my understanding from Elisa is this is gonna come back, you know, the, the final letter just before it's sent is gonna come back before us, is that?
We can, we can certainly do that. I, I think the, this list was kind of vetted through the UTMP, of course, and then Bill Jackson and Chuck and, and some of the others that have been working on the master plan, so it, it feels like it's pretty close, but if there were, I think definitely we can add things. Brent, are you feeling comfortable with that in terms of the workload for the grant application?
Yeah.
We need to tweak the list a little bit and?
Yeah, we are needing to write the application around the projects that we are proposing. And so if there is any change, we'd rather have that sooner rather than later, because we have to describe how those projects meet the grant criteria. So if we're slopping out a project, it just makes it more difficult to, to write the grant application specific to the criteria.
But.
Maybe we could get a little committee together, like a little subcommittee to kind of make sure that we're not missing anything on this list before, and then get that information back to Kimley Horn by in, in two weeks' time.
You know, even as, you know, an email opportunity.
Uh huh, sure.
Yeah, like, again, I don't, I, I understand Brent's point about writing the application. I don't want to slow things down, but
Right.
Usually, you know, since this is actually, we'll turn into a, you know, if we get the grant, it's deciding what we're gonna be, build, I just think there should be more opportunities.
Okay, yep, we can definitely do that. We can circulate this via email and if we need to meet, we can set that up too.
Okay, great. Thanks, Elisa. All right, is that clear? Any other discussion on that, everyone? We good? Okay, we have a motion on the table to support the grant. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Thanks again, Brent.
Thank you.
All right, let's see. Okay, I'm on to item thirteen B, awarding bid and associated contract with BAE Urban Economics for the Local Workforce Housing and Affordable Housing Nexus Study and Linkage Fee Analysis. And this one is also Elisa Martin, Planning and Zoning.
Thank you. The Planning and Zoning Office is requesting approval of a contract award to BAE Urban Economics to conduct the housing nexus study. The request for proposals for the housing study was initiated on July seventh, twenty twenty-two with a submission deadline of August first. Only the one proposal from BAE was submitted. As there was only one bid, a selection committee was not formed and BAE Urban Economics was chosen for the award. Planning and zoning staff are confident in the decision to contract with BAE based on their past experience and work in the Moab area in conducting the previous twenty eighteen housing study, which provided the basis for both the county and city's assured housing ordinances at that time, as well as recently completing a separate study for the city of Moab that supported their recently approved Active Employed Households Ordinance. The study will provide the basis to implement an update to the Assured Housing section of the Land Use Code by providing methods for increasing deed-restricted housing for locals and local workforce, as well as incentives for increasing the number of affordable housing units in the county. Phase one of the study is sixty-seven thousand eight hundred forty dollars and includes two components capturing two different interpretations of the relationship between new development and housing demand. For consistency with other regional efforts, the study will provide the necessary analysis to implement a workforce housing requirement as a use standard as opposed to a proportional exaction. A linkage fee analysis will also be provided as an alternative or complementary method to increasing workforce housing. The two methods will be evaluated for effectiveness so that the county may choose the best tool to implement. Phase two of the study is optional and would be roughly sixty-two thousand four hundred and eighty and would evaluate the feasibility of two programs, a deed restriction purchase program to incentivize homeowners and real estate buyers, sellers to deed restrict their property for local residents of the, of the county with the purpose of preserving a pool of homes for primary occupancy. And an ADU incentive program by which grant money would be used to assist property owners in the construction of ADUs, helping to offset construction costs and impact fees. So the, that's my summary for the process and what the study, what the study would actually produce. Do you all have any questions?
Any questions for Elisa? Um, yes, I, I know what a proportional exaction is. I'm, I'm less sure what a linkage fee analysis or the use standard. Could you explain this?
Proportional exaction is, is something that would occur with a linkage fee, like a fee in lieu where we would, like, for, say, commercial development. You, if a developer came in to planning and zoning and submitted an application for new commercial and we had a, an amount that we would apply for a fee in lieu, because they wouldn't be necessarily providing those workforce units as part of their development, but they would be providing a fee in lieu. And that is not what the city of Moab did. That's a different approach that we would be looking at. What the, what Moab, uh, Moab's approach was centered around is the use standard, which is only applying this requirement to new subdivisions essentially. So when a subdivision application comes in, there would be a use standard that would require a certain amount of those lots to be deed restricted for local workforce. And for Grand County, that would be like, we would be looking at probably applying that more broad instead of just picking and choosing specific residential zoning districts, but more across the board for residential. And then, how can I also explain that? It is a little complicated. I, it took me a while to understand the difference of the two different approaches. But essentially, the study would, BAE kind of understands, they get like, what, what we were proposing originally was more of a, of a requirement based on this linkage fee analysis, which might not amount to much when it comes down to it, so. The other approach is to look at overall build-out of development in the county and kind of base the requirement on the need for local housing for our future, you know, public safety, health and welfare is what it's more based on.
Okay, so, so I recall when we were discussing the sure, you know, with, for sure housing with, with hotels like three or so years ago. There, and then we were doing a proportional exaction and it was important that we have an economic study that basically told us how much
That's exactly what that was, yeah.
Charge, okay, and so that's.
That was a proportional exaction approach, right?
Yeah, and so, but you're saying there's another approach where we can just set a percentage and does this still need to be justified somehow?
So, okay, let me see if I can get the, the language from the actual proposal that kind of describes it better. So this is the, this is the way BAE describes what they did as part of the Moab's little study that they did. It wasn't a very big study, but for consistency, oh, I already read that part. So BA, BAE will request information from the county regarding the net remaining development capacity. So total build-out capacity minus existing development that exists throughout the county under the existing land use code. BAE will then estimate the new population and employment increment through build-out and will apply household conversion factors prepared as part of the twenty eighteen study to estimate additional housing demand through build-out by income level. So then they will compare the total workforce housing demand resulting from residential and non-residential build-out to the county's total housing capacity to estimate the share of the remaining build-out capacity, capacity to be set aside. So it's kind of looking at the, the whole build-out capacity and figuring out what we actually need in real terms as far as local housing to support new development or new commercial.
Yeah, no, thanks. That, that was helpful. I do wonder, I think our, if the build-out is just based on, you know, zoning and acreage, I mean, that's a, that's a huge unrealistic.
There's some caveats there, for sure, because there's, we would need to put, we would need to be thinking about water capacity too. So that would be part of what we would give to the consultant as part of the, the build-out. It wouldn't just be based on zoning, it would be.
Okay, so the maximum build-out that they look at is gonna take water into account.
Right, we need to estimate some range of build-out capacity based on water, for sure.
Yeah, just, um, I have a question about timelines. I think contractually, it looks like BAE would have a, a year to complete studies, but it looks like they intend on a more aggressive timeline.
Yeah, we're trying to get the phase one study done before the year's over.
Okay.
So we can get something updated in our code by the first of the year.
So you're looking to possibly do the equivalent of the city's assured housing ordinance by the end of the year or something that is similar?
Yep, we are, but see, I think what happened, I mean, I guess it is very unfortunate the way that it happened at the city when they came to their public hearing initially, I think there was a lot of misconception around what they were proposing and it got stalled for many months based on just the work that they needed to do to kind of clear that up and negotiate down to what was, what felt right for the development community.
Right.
I think fortunately for where we stand, a lot of that work is underway and we are working with the city on kind of aligning our approach and making sure that we're, you know, not undermining any of that effort that they've already.
And theoretically, data from the phase one study would sort of reinforce a lot of that process.
Right, exactly, yes. And then phase two would be an optional feasibility analysis and that could happen in the new year, probably in twenty twenty-three.
Okay. So since we're, we're talking, I mean, this is, we're, we're discussing making, you know, some significant changes to the land use code. I, I, I don't have the exact name, but you know, typically one does some kind of note, notice that for the, you know, so that any applications are filed in the next six months.
And we did that.
So we have done that?
Yes, at one of, I can't remember if it was two meetings ago, but it was the pending ordinance resolution that we adopted.
Okay, sorry, I forgot.
Yeah, no, I know, it's, it's been a little while. And since then, we've actually kind of evolved our approach a little bit, but luckily BAE was already anticipating that we might want to look at how the city's doing things and not go off and do something completely different. So they integrated that into the, their proposal from the get-go, which was nice.
Okay, and then maybe taking a step back, just, just to make sure I understand the, the relation of the various different housing programs that we have. This, so we, we have, we have this incentive program, you know, for us, it's the HDH O, which, you know, is, is near capacity, but you know, there's been talk of maybe having a round two of that. What, what this study is about is for people who don't take advantage of the incentives and, right, is that?
There is, actually, what we've only been discussing as of now is here in this meeting, is just the, the first part of phase one, so there's actually a whole nother part of phase one that would analyze what our current incentives are in the land use code and how we can improve those incentives for affordable housing units, so moderate to low-income housing. And that's where we can legally ask for that if we provide an incentive, and so that was where we were discussing looking at our future land use map and using that as the basis for incentivizing rezon requests that may provide a property an upzone, and in that we would build in a development agreement to say if we're gonna be approving this rezon request, then here's the terms for the affordable housing that we would need in return, and that's part of the analysis in the study too, to see how would we do that, how we would even set it up, the legality of it.
Um, but why do we need, and couldn't we just do something similar to what we've already done with the HDH O?
It would be very similar to that, right, but it wouldn't be an overlay district. It would be based on our general plan's future land use map that identifies places where we're changing, we would be identifying, like, it wouldn't be changing the zoning, but we would be proposing new areas where higher density could occur.
Okay.
So identifying like multifamily, where, because we have very little multifamily right now, and so the HDH O is essentially a multifamily zoning district almost at some levels. And so having that in our, built into our future land use map where we're actually making those hard decisions and saying, here's where we're gonna, in the future, we'd like to see multifamily development go. We've identified it on the map, so if folks want to apply for that rezon request that aligns with our, what we've identified on the future land use map, that's an upzone for them. And that would, that would kick in a development agreement to say, just like the HDH O, like, here's the, here's your density bonus essentially, and here's what we need in return as far as affordable housing.
Okay, yeah, okay, so I, I think I understand, but I was more asking about the relationship between the, the first part, you know, these, these use standards or, you know, the things that are similar to the city's assured housing, which I, I, I guess legally, there's a distinction between incentive-based programs and ones that aren't, and we're more constrained when we're not offering an incentive.
Right, so as of now, we can require deed-restricted workforce housing legally without providing an incentive. But it needs to be based on a legal justification and economic.
And, and so in the kind, we're, we're proceeding on both of those tracks.
Exactly.
We're gonna have some incentive-based process.
Yeah.
The HDH O is one we've already done, you just described another, but then in addition and parallel to that, we've got this.
We have many tools that we would like to figure out if we can implement, yeah. And, and HDH O is definitely still on the table, like, I suppose, but I, I see it as being, I see the future land use map as being a tool that's a little bit more long-term vision, kind of. long term vision, kind of comprehensive vision versus just targeting these little areas that we want to, that we think high density housing could go. So that's that makes sense.
I think so.
Any other questions, Evan?
Is this a insurance document that's included in the packet? Is that the um certificate of insurance?
We do have that from the.
It has been.
Yeah, we have received it. I don't know if it got into the packet, did it?
It did.
But it's still pending attorney review?
Actually, I think we're good with that. According to Christina's last email today, she felt good about it, yeah.
Also put in motion because I know she doesn't like when we do that, so. That uh we approve a contract pending legal review. But uh because this is a timeline and I'd like to see these efforts move forward, I don't want to delay them, so I would move to approve the award and associated contract for the local workforce housing and affordable housing nexus study and linkage fee analysis to Bay Urban Economics for some not to exceed one hundred and thirty thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars conditional upon attorney review.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Clapper. Do I have a second? All right, um second by Commissioner McGann. Um, any discussion after that, after all the discussion we've had? All right, seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand, say aye. And it looks like that passes unanimously. And I would like to get to a uh back to school night. I've I've two kids in elementary school and that starts in a few minutes. And we have just a couple items left on the agenda, so I'm going to exit and I'm going to hand this over to Commissioner and Vice Chair McGann, if if you're okay with that, Mary. Okay, thank you very much.
Can we get a symbolic pass the gavel, please?
So United States Supreme Court.
All right, thank, thank you, everybody. Thank you, Alyssa.
Join me in your your teachers. We are two item uh thirteen B approval of the cooperative marketing program with Kanu, I think we came up with it when we were reviewing this, Kanu Kiwi, 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 right? Kanu Kiwi, right? Yeah, Kanu Kiwi and the Utah Office of Tourism, Ben Alter and Melissa Starks, thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Well, I submitted the agenda item, but Melissa is the expert on marketing, understanding our demographics and our strategy, so you have your uh background section and we welcome any questions. We also have Zach Fine on the line, who is with Utah Office of Tourism and is also the specialist with the Kanak Kiwi specifically, so.
Kanak Kiwi.
Any questions?
Who came up with the name?
Zach. So, so, yes. Who is the owner of these um company? He's from Canada and his wife is from New Zealand. So that's what is a Kanak Kiwi. Yeah.
Are there any questions that you would like to ask? Or can I have a motion?
Um, if you just give a quick summary, what what exactly will happen for this money? I mean, it's it looks like they've got travel magazines and things like that and they.
So actually, um well, in April, I went to Canada, I went for a sale missions representing Moa. And I learned about the Canadian visitors. I have a connection with all the agencies, all the media, the press, the influencers. And it became the Canada is uh the highest spending international market for the state. And because of that, the airport has two direct flights to Canada. One is going to Vancouver every single day and another one go to Toronto. Second, uh our goal with this cooperative marketing program is to bring quality visitors, to follow our responsible recreation campaign message before they first arrive here. And they follow also the forever mighty uh practice of not trades, uh leave no trace with the Utah Office of Tourism. So that's why when I went to IPW, this is the biggest event of tourism, uh the Utah Office of Tourism and Kanak Kiwi, we have a little chat and they say, hey, Melissa, this is a good thing for your for your office, for Moa, and they say, why you guys don't apply for this cooperative marketing program that we can match the price. So that's why I I'm here right now.
Can can you talk a little bit more and and maybe if you can, Zach can, but can you talk a little more about where we're going to be placing?
Of course.
It's gonna be like in magazines, it's gonna be on websites, where is it gonna be on websites, stuff like that?
So right now, um we are just applying uh for two places. One is the Travel Week Canada and that's a publication focused on travel trade agents. And if we, you guys have that on the package, right? And you guys can see that, for example, I P or we P uh so we pick the, for the Travel Week Canada, we picked the three thousand dollars. And we opened up PDF that they sent to us. Is that is between the five thousand and two thousand, so we send in the three thousand dollars. First, because the five thousand offered to be in the homepage of the Travel Week and we don't want to be in the homepage. It's not necessary for us to be in the homepage, but uh we would like to, that they send newsletters. And we want to use that video, the responsible recreation video that we have, we want to post on that, we want to do the social media posts and also they are doing email blasts to all the agencies. And the second um the second campaign would be the Expedia Media road trip campaign that is four thousand dollars. So that one is focused on yeah, this is unlike travel, that you can book hotel, fly, is car. So this is focused on the direct consumer. So when they want to come to Moa, they're gonna look for hotels, they're gonna look for car rentals, restaurants, etc. And we picked the four thousand dollars. It's gonna be a campaign, a full campaign for a month. And it's gonna be a specific for the youth road trips of people that are coming with cars. So a lot of Canadians, they like to come to youth and they like to come driving. And our target is fifty five plus retired activities, adventure, high spender. Uh that they like to stay in hotels and pay pay for diet activities to support the local economy.
So add some context?
Any other questions? I would call.
This is through uh, we're partnering with the Utah Office of Tourism, where it's directly with the
So they, so they actually, oh, well, sexually.
Yeah, Zach, would you mind explaining the relationship of Kanak Kiwi and the Utah Office of Tourism?
Absolutely. Um, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Um, so Kanak Kiwi is our in-market vendor representing the Canada and Australia market. The owner and the whole team is located in Auckland, New Zealand. Um, so they are the ones who are negotiating and working with uh each of these vendors, Travel Week and Expedia to negotiate these placements, they organize the assets, they um uh basically, they can, they are the intermediaries between our partners and these uh in-market vendors. Um, and so they would be so Mo uh this Discover Moab would be sending funds directly to Kanak Kiwi. Um, so while it is associated with the Utah Office of Tourism, it's Kanak Kiwi that's organizing the campaigns entirely.
I I guess part of the reason I was asking was the focus on the ski marketing.
So with the the ski marketing, it's necess, we're, we have several Southern Utah partners that are participating in this. The idea is trying to push dispersed visitors to come outside of the peak seasons and come to Moab during the uh winter time period. Um, so we're focusing on our two biggest international winter markets. Uh, the Canadians who are big snowbirders, a lot of the retirees come down to Southern U, just come down to the United States for their winter homes. And then you have the Australians who their summer, who are located in the southern hemisphere. And their um so their win, their summer uh vacation period aligns with our winter, which makes both of these markets ideal for uh trying to disperse visitation and increase uh hotel stays during more of your down period. And so, I mean, overall, international visitors are high va, highly valuable visitors in general. They typically stay longer, they spend more. These are once in a lifetime trips for them, so they're not coming in and coming in for like one or two days, going to the the best sites and then leaving right away. They're they're a lot more engaged. They, as Melissa said, they stay in hotels, they engage with um local uh guides and outfitters. So um if you wanted to get across your, uh do it like a mobile, do it like a local uh messaging and trying to get the more responsible visitor, uh this is your best opportunity to get that messaging out is through these two campaigns where you're reaching one, the direct consumer through Expedia. And then two, you're reaching the uh travel agents um through Travel Week. So it's a it's a very red emerald forever mighty type of messaging overall.
Thank you.
And the specific messaging that, you know, consumers will see, that's something that our office is gonna produce.
So, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna create that, we're gonna work together.
So Melissa, so what happens is we send out the asset request to Melissa's team and they're the ones who tell us, who give us the copy, they give us the photos and they give us the messaging. They have full control of what type of messaging they like. Uh, we're just responsible for just sending this off to Travel Week and Expedia.
And of course, our office is more than happy to work with you all on tracking those messages. I know that's been.
You just want to participate and approve of these.
That's something we've been working on in general, I think this is.
Well, well, I think once you get things developed, just at least give me a chance.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Not so good by the travel customer or two.
Yeah, they're great for working.
Yeah.
Um, you guys have touched on the rec uh responsible rec. And I remember reading it, but now I can't find it, but I feel like there's specific data um of polling of Canadian travelers and um sort of their premium put on um responsible recreation. And uh so I wonder if you could just speak to that as far as like numbers and data?
Yeah, that that may have been an email that Zach sent us and I forwarded along, but it may get to the packet, so you may be able to speak to that. But I know that also Melissa has some information on a well-being index that you learned about when you were traveling in Canada, if you want to speak to that briefly.
So, yeah, like, like I say before, the youth international, uh the highest is the Canada, Canada in two thousand and nineteen, they spent one hundred seventy four million dollars. And second would be China with one hundred thirty eight point one million dollars. So Canada for us is when I went to Canada, they say for us is not international. Fly is a domestic flight to come to you, so they really, really love you. So that's what they say, they they, I mean, they um they used to, I mean, they adapt to the culture of America, they, we are super similar um about that, uh you have the spending of international visa.
Right, yes, I, yeah, traditionally, Canada has been our largest market outside domestic market. Um, but I try to remember, don't, don't you have something about, let's see?
So we have the visa destination information that for this year, they they just spent one point for me.
I'm thinking more about, do you remember when they were talking about like, you had some information about Canadian values and how they know messages like leave no trace and record responsibly, part of a well-being index? You have that, you know, so.
And while they're.
Yes, yes. But, yeah, go ahead, Zach.
Um, while they're searching for that information, um just overall, Canadians have been high on sustainable travel well before the US. I mean, these I mean, the Native American heritage, uh leaving no trace, uh just respecting the environment, respecting the environment is has been part of their culture well before most American destinations have taken hold. And the other fact of it is just how old, how generally much older uh the Canadian population is compared to other Western nations, about uh one quarter of of the nation is uh retiree age. And so um and just more, and so they're about fifty five percent more likely to travel outside of borders than uh people that are uh than are younger. So I mean, who we're, who we're generally targeting is normally just re- uh retirees with additional um additional leisure time, those who like to do the um this winter snowbirds, uh travel to the Southern US to avoid the Canadian winters. So um just combining just how we're targeting an older generation with more, more resources, more valuable customer, we're doing, we're trying to get them to come out during a lower time period so that they're not adding to the congestion in Moab. Uh, it's just, it's more with responsible messaging. It just aligns best with everything that uh these two campaigns have to offer.
And just a little clarity, so on the highlighted partner often form, I see Expedia Media Greatest Snow on Earth and Road Trip Campaigns, but then road, the Road Trip Campaign focus is the one that's highlighted. Does that mean we're not opt opting in for that Greatest Snow on Earth Australian focus there? Right, I mean, that makes sense to me, because our map has one parking lot and it's full, you know? But I just, I just want to clarify.
I just don't know, yeah, that was kind of my original question that Sarah brings up is uh if we're targeting the snowbird, get away from the snow, I don't know if putting our ad in Warren Miller flicks is like gonna get those people. I don't think they're watching like adrenaline ski flicks to like come to the desert.
So you're you're talking about Australia, which is a completely different audience that we're targeting. Australians are so valuable because they get so much time off, generally five weeks in the year. A lot of them use that time off during their summer holidays, which aligns with that December, January, February. So um we promote to, with, so with uh Canada, we're promoting a little bit more to the older audience. With Australia, it's gonna be more of the, more of the the family holiday of combining ski with the road tripping aspect. Um, so a lot of these Australians will, they typically average about sixteen, seventeen days in the United States. And well, we're, and they're our largest international market for skiing, so we normally uh reach out to them for that uh for that winter ski uh trip, but then we combine a lot of that messaging with uh visiting our Su- um Southern Utah parks and destinations in the off season. So with Australia, you're gonna be targeting a little bit more of the the higher end families um who have that amount of, uh what's it called again? Just resources to travel for that uh time period as well as just uh couples that are um couples with, what's it called again? Like high, high wealth index as well. Um, so that's kind of the the difference. We're we're targeting two different consumer bases for Australia and Canada.
Uh, so in our packet, we have a a form and there's two boxes checked. We have two copies of the form. One is highlighted with nothing, with two boxes checked and another one's not highlighted with everything in. So I guess the suggested motion is to approve the the the, okay.
Could I actually say something on that?
Yeah.
So um originally, Melissa had actually proposed that we spend a little closer to fifteen thousand.
Sixteen.
Sixteen and um also do some targeting of Australian, New Zealand as well. And we were looking at the budget and it looked like our, we were just about running up against our advertising spend for the year, so we lowered it. Um, I think we'd absolutely be open to input from the commission if we wanted to change how we're entering this contract and also um I know that there's the potential that we might um for keeping with statute purposes, that we might need to bring some promotion dollars that weren't spent last year into our budget this year. And so if that happens, I think we would possibly consider building on the tiers that are in this contract that we haven't signed on to to target those other markets. So that's why the current selections just reflect targeting the Canadian market.
So I just want to add these comments, um at the beginning, my goal was to promote Canada and Australian New Zealand and for Australian New Zealand, I was. At the beginning, my goal was to promote Canada and Australia and New Zealand, and for Australia and New Zealand, I was thinking to wrap that campaign of the media campaign, the three thousand dollar, and that, also the winter day was four thousand dollars. So, yeah, that would be four, five, six, seven, yeah, another seven thousand.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Or Vice Chair, whoever you are.
Whoever I am today.
I would make a motion to approve the opt-in form with options A and B, and enter into the cooperative marketing program with Canoe Kiwi and the Utah Office of Tourism.
Motion by Evan, do I have a second? Second by Josie.
And just for the record, that's for the fiscal impact of seven thousand dollars.
Is there any further questions or discussion?
I just wanted to close out the question about skiing that Evan started, so if I understood Zach correctly, we're not actually doing this, this motion, but if we were to advertise to Australians, we would be encouraging them to come ski in the Wasatch Mountains and then come down to Grand, is that the idea?
Were you saying that we'd be advertising to folks who normally come to ski to spread out their vacation and consider other non-ski hotspots? Is that, that's what I got, but
But we're not suggesting people come ski in Los Alamos. Full and
That's exactly our point. We want to disperse visitation, we want people to come out, come to Southern Utah when it's not as busy and there's less congestion, so you're absolutely right. We're promoting ski Northern Utah, get in the car, and then check out all the sites in Southern Utah afterwards.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just say that I feel like there's been a kind of a free-for-all in Moab the last couple years with visitorship and kind of a theme park vibe, and so I wholly support anything that is more targeted specifically to demographics that show they want to spend some quality time here in a very conscientious way. And this seems like a really good fit for that.
Thank you. Melissa's been working hard finding those audiences, so kudos to you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay, I will call for a vote. All in favor? Passes unanimously, six to zero. Zach, Jacques has left. We, it is six, almost six fifteen, is there anybody present for citizens to be heard? No one? Okay, we will move to Council of Aging's Board Member, Sarah.
I'll just start with motion. I move to approve the selection of Kim Sherwood as a new member of Grand County's Council on Aging Board.
Motion by Sarah, do I have a second?
I'll pause it.
Second by Kevin, discussion. All in favor? Passes unanimously. We are ticked to the consent agenda, approving the purchase of two pitching mounds for Athem Sports for Old Spanish Trail Arena and Outer Bike Western Spirits Local Consent. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agendas?
So moved.
Motion by Evan, do I have a second? Second by Sarah, discussion. All in favor? There is no discussion items. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session to discuss character incompetency.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Second by Evan. We will, at the time is six fifteen, we are moving into closed session to discuss character incompetency.